A second, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain? One abstention. Motion approved. Next item, six C, which is the approved minutes from October 18th council workshop. Is there a motion?
The motion.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Abstain. One abstention. Okay, moving on to our regular agenda, item seven A, the Cable Commission budget approval. And Dan.
Mayor members of council, we have with us remotely tonight Paul Pearson from LATV. And I am hoping that we do not have a repeat of the EDA meeting when we first tried remote attendance. But Paul is here tonight to go over the Cable Commission budget for 2022. The reason why this comes before council, this actually is a creature of the JPA that we have with LATV. Their budget does go before all members for review and vote annually. So last year, Paul comes in and presents the budget. He also has a little bit of an update just on terms of LATV operations. It's also an opportunity for council to ask any questions of Paul that they may have. The budget that you have before you tonight for LATV has been reviewed and approved by both the Cable Commission and the City of Columbus. So it's here tonight for your review and hopefully you can get Paul logged in on your screen. And I will turn it over to Paul.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I am so sorry I'm not with you tonight. I wasn't feeling very well, so I decided it was better for me to stay home than come in there. I do see my video is doing a infinity zoom here. Do you guys have that or you just see me?
Just you.
Okay. Just the quick nuts and bolts of our budget this year. It's very similar to last year. The salaries between me and my administrative assistant went up the 3.1%. We did our biannual audit last year with Leonard Winter, same company that's been doing it for years, and they had no suggestions for improvement. One note to have on this budget is we've been putting $5,000 a year away for a franchise reserve where we have to rewrite that in 2028. Well, after the last couple of years, we had a little, we were a little bit cash rich, so we actually put the entire 30,000, which was the balance to get us to 30,000 to 60,000 away. So in future years, we won't have to be putting away that $5,000. And other than that, that's, the numbers are basically the same as last year. We kind of held very closely and are on budget with most of our items.
Thank you, Paul. Council, questions for Paul or for the Cable Commission budget that's before us this evening? Dan, are we supposed to be seeing anything on screen?
Are you not seeing anything on your?
We're seeing Paul's video, but we're not seeing any material presentation.
Correct, yeah, that's all we have on the screen now. It was supposed to be that. The budget was included in your packet and I can see if I can pull it up here.
Ninety-one. Yeah, page.
Paul, are you able to do a screen share of the budget?
We can try. And there is just two pages to this. Let me know if you want me to flip to page two.
Yeah, if you could drop down to page two, that'd be great. Just giving view in the room of what council has before us in our packet, so help.
Sure.
All right, council, questions of the Cable Commission budget or operations in general? This is Paul's annual update to council. I have just, so a couple of notes. Paul, you do great work and so thank you for ongoing service to the community and the value you provide is just, you just do great work. So thank you for that, appreciate that and the work of the Cable Commission and supporting those efforts. I know that prior to COVID, there was a lot of work done with the schools and developing the in-school studio. Just haven't heard recently how that is going. And now that we are back to more of an in-person model, what does that utilization look like? How is that relationship with the schools gone? I'd just love to hear your perspectives.
It is moving along very, very slowly. So I met with a group of about 10 teachers over the summer because we are working towards not next year, but the year after possibly fitting video curriculum into four different classrooms with, and this is all at the high school at this point. And so different, they're starting a school newspaper, which I was helping them begin with before COVID. Unfortunately, all those students I was working with have since graduated. So we're kind of starting from scratch on a lot of these things. So we're trying to figure out different ways to fit this all back together. There was a marketing class where an assignment for the students would be to create a promotional video for a local business. So I would sit down and help them with things like that. And podcasts are a big thing with students. So we are going to get back in with the high school. It just kind of got put on hold and it's a little slow to get back up and running. I've been talking with Kathy there on the council and she suggested I come and do a pitch to Lila as well because I kind of explained all the opportunities I was working on at the high school and she thought that would be really good, really nice to work that into Lila as well. So I'm putting together a proposal to go meet with Lila as well. And hopefully, you know, the goal is in the next few years is we just have students with classes and clubs that they just, as they come in, the ones that are graduating are training and the younger ones, and we just keep this cycle going and create a lot of great videos, telling a lot of great stories for Forest Lake and hopefully the students can help us out. So I am still working at it. It is, it's a little slow at the moment. We have still been, we've still been live streaming a few things for the school. We still live stream the football. And if they call and ask if different schools, like I'm working with some promotional videos with Kathy at Lila as well. I just got called today, we're doing a veterans program at the high school next month. So I still work with them on certain video projects like that.
Certainly, mock car crash was a recent example of that and another project, another project well done. So thank you. As it relates to overall funding, the Cable Commission receives PEG funds as part of those fees and those are reserved within the Cable Commission for equipment purchases. Just Dan or Paul, how are we looking for overall PEG fees and upcoming kind of need for equipment? Are we in a position of well-funded status where future equipment needs are covered? Just want to make sure we're sitting in an okay place.
We are doing well with that and I have, in the CIP and the budget I handed you, my outlook for the end of this year, beginning of next year is to probably upgrade our entire broadcast system that will help a lot with city meetings for the most part because it will create a piece of code that you can embed in your websites. And so as meetings play live, graphics will be put on them live. My people running them will actually hit little markers that mark when you jump to different agenda items. So this will all happen in real time for both cities. That meetings will be a lot more streamlined and that is in the budget. And as far as the cash for the gear, we're just fine. We have, we have a lot of great new cinema gear to help make different kind of story videos. Last year, we purchased four new digital video cameras that are 4K with the anticipation that the older ones are going to go to Lila. So instead of checking them out for every production, we can probably check them out for months at a time and students can work up to live stream sports and things like that in Lila as well as the high school.
Just to piggyback off that, there's also, the Cable Commission's been working on establishing an equipment reserve and part of, as part of that pay revenue because the equipment in this room, even though it's working well today, it's starting, there will be a spot where we have to replace it and making sure that there's a balance there. So when you have to replace cameras or the audio system in here, video system, those funds will be available. So that is being thought of, forward thinking. So we are starting looking at, because City of Forest Lake and Columbus both have relatively new systems in there. If you want to be positioned for in five years, if you have to do a full system replacement, we don't, the funds will be there available for replacements.
One, one quick side note is, I don't know if anybody knows the backstory. Scandia was part of our joint powers years ago. They decided to leave, it was a two-year process for them to leave. They did a few years ago. Well, they are requesting to come back into the joint powers now. And so I have met with them and the Cable Commission has talked about it. And the place where it now is, the city administrator from Scandia is going to come pitch to Forest Lake and Columbus their request. And then it's kind of up to you guys as to your thoughts on whether you want to let them in and how that will work. At this point, we're kind of leaving the ball in their court at this point to move it forward.
And make sure I understand the process. If that were to occur, that ask were to be made, the joint powers agreement would be rewritten essentially. Is that correct?
That's kind of where we're running into the problem is because there is, there was a clause for somebody to leave in there. There is no clause for somebody to come back. And we're, that's where we're kind of hitting a snag at this point.
Understood. Other, any other questions for Paul?
And I'm just curious, Paul, so you know, as we're pondering, you know, taking Scandia back, for lack of a better phrase here, what would be some considerations? I mean, I know you're a pretty lean staff and have some limited capacity to meet needs of communities. Beyond that, you know, is there anything else that council should be aware of when considering this?
That is, that is our biggest consideration right now is just my time. I have had a hard time trying to find somebody to train to do the story part of this. For city meetings, we're already filming all of Scandia's meetings. I send one of my staff there, they put a new system in there with care dollars and we still record their meetings and they pay us for them. So as far as city meetings, it doesn't affect us at all. It is more my time for creating any kind of stories that they would want. And that is very heavily being taken into consideration before we make another step on this, so.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? With that, is there a motion to approve? We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Just say, ongoing thanks to Paul and the Cable Commission staff for the great service and like to re, we can't say that enough, so we appreciate, appreciate all of the work that you do. And with that, all of those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion is approved. Thank you for being here this evening, Paul.
Thank you for having me. I just want to say that I have an absolute ball doing what I get to do, so thank you for letting me do it.
Fabulous. You are welcome to hang on here for the rest of, the rest of our meeting if you're so inclined.
All right, thank you.
All right. With that, we will move on to our second agenda, item seven B, which is the resolution to accept a donation. And Chief Peterson, I think you're going to walk us through this.
Yeah, Mayor and City Council members, what I have for you this evening is a resolution accepting a donation in the amount of $370 from Birchwood Healthcare Center to the police department. I want to thank Birchwood for their generous donation and staff recommendation is to accept the donation with gratitude.
There a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve resolution 10-25-21-01, a $370 donation from Birchwood Healthcare to the Forest Lake Police Department with gratitude.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and motion is approved. Our next item this evening is council's consideration of our resolution to support CSAH 33 pedestrian and safety improvements. And Ryan, I believe you're going to, you're going to start us on this.
Mayor City Council, as we presented the council workshop last Monday, next step was to come forward tonight to seek the approval, the resolution of support for the project that's been presented and move forward to the next steps of that project. We do have two Washington County members here tonight to talk about the project. I believe Commissioner Miron is going to go first. So we'll welcome him to the podium.
Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. First of all, thank you for meeting with us a week ago. It was really a pleasure to be back here in Forest Lake. It's been 10 years since we've had a major road reconstruction project here in Forest Lake and County Road 33 is in dire need of work and we're excited to be bringing that project to you. We've got an opportunity to address many issues along that roadway, particularly safety. But in addition, certainly stormwater treatment within the area, some access issues with respect to some of the business community that's served by that road. And then, very importantly, I think the opportunity to provide pedestrian mobility throughout the corridor. So Morgan Abbott is with me this evening. She went through a PowerPoint with you in workshop setting. I don't believe she's going to handle that tonight in lieu of time. I appreciated the intuitive questions that you had in the workshop session. The community is well-served by the time that you place into reviewing these projects and making sure that they meet the needs of the citizens here in Forest Lake. So I'll turn it over to Morgan Abbott and she can provide the information that you may need on the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Welcome again.
Thanks, thank you, Commissioner Miron. Madam Mayor, council members, like Commissioner Miron said, thank you for welcoming the project last week for the workshops, giving us the opportunity to explain the process and introduce you to the preferred alternative. So tonight, I stand with the request of approval of Agenda Item 7C, the resolution of support of County State Aid Highway 33 pedestrian and safety improvement project. I'll stand for any questions, if there's anyone with additional questions that have come up in the last week.
Very good, thank you. Are there any questions that have come up? And I guess I would open it up broadly to questions to either Morgan or Ryan or any other member of, member of staff at this point.
Morgan, I know this is the first step of a few steps. Can you just kind of refresh us what happens after tonight?
Yep, so after tonight, then we move into final design. And that includes right-of-way analysis, appraisals, acquisition. But then we also go into more detail of the engineering design of the corridor. We're still working with Menards to relocate their driveway through that process. And then we'll come back to you once the design is complete and we'll ask, there'll be two cooperative agreements that we come with you, come forward to you. One is a maintenance agreement and the other one is a cost share agreement for construction. So that would reflect the bid prices. So we'll advertise the project and get a contractor. So those are exact prices that we can give you at that point, but then we'll present them to you for your approval.
Thank you for the recap. Any other questions we may have for Morgan this evening?
Yeah, how long will that process take?
So design, the next phase is two years. So we'll be back in approximately two years. And then construction will be one construction season, construction seasons from March until November of 2024.
Okay, thank you.
Just highlights the long-tail nature of these projects and how it's important to get that feedback upfront because there is a lot of follow-up activities that certainly are triggered by that. So thank you for all of the community engagement you've had so far and the kind of the robust outreach that you've had on this project, especially great to hear about some of the specific business reach out that you've done. It's great to hear as part of the workshop. Council, do we have other questions this evening? Or consideration is Resolution 10252102, and that is on page 96 of your packet if anyone is ready to move.
Mayor Bain, I move adoption of Resolution 10-25-21-02, a resolution of support for County Highway 33 Improvement Project, County Project Number CP 13301.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Quick note of thanks to our county partners and also city staff that have worked on getting us to this point. We look forward to a successful project as you, as we all know, this is a very needed project in our community. So we look forward to getting involved. With that, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion is approved. Thank you for being here this evening. Next on our agenda this evening is item 7D, which is consideration of the Community Development Director development position. Patrick has provided this under separate cover and those materials are printed on our DAS. Also, we're providing via email prior to tonight's meeting. Patrick, go ahead.
Sure. Well, we've talked about the Community Development Director now for three, four, maybe even five meetings. The original thought of this, recent thoughts came out of the EDA Commission, EDA Authority, I should say, where they were concerned with the amount of staff time that was getting taken up for EDA-related materials and did staff have the time to, as EDA's demands increased, did we have time to cover those demands? And the honest answer was no, we did not. We split that between Dan and myself and it has become a challenge to do EDA and other work. So the other thing is that we have begun to see an increase in workload for development, more on the housing side and apartment side. Right now, somewhere in the pipeline, we have a possible 300 new housing units for next year if they all come through at 100%. So, and probably more coming. Every day, it seems, we get another inquiry from developers who want to put up apartment building after apartment building after apartment building. All of those take time, all of those take effort, all of those take review, which is challenging the staff to keep up with that. Recently, we had resignation of the zoning administrator. He decided to pursue, pursue a, another career, not another career, but a different position in his career path. And we hope that he's successful with that. But what that really pointed out, and once we looked at it hard, is that a few years back in 2014, they consolidated three positions into that zoning administrative position. We had the Community Development Director, we had the City Planner and a City Assistant, Administrative Assistant for Community Development, all put into one position. While that worked for a while, development was slow in the 14s, coming off of the housing bubble crisis that we had in 2008 and really didn't start to recover for quite a while. But as, as the years go by and went by, more and more development came and is coming and we were just not able to handle it with that position and still do zoning enforcement and property maintenance complaints and all the other things that that position was tasked with. So this gives us an opportunity to reorganize and refresh our community development process. We think that with a addition of a Community Development Director, that will put us on a good path. We will also continue to and recruit for a planner position once we hire the Community Development Position. So we believe we need those two positions to, to take us forward in the development process, but also in the EDA materials and working with that. We've had some discussions regarding, or at least there has been on social media, about us being top-heavy or adding too many positions and that's, I'll have to disagree, that's just not the case. We are a very growing community, as we've mentioned in the past. We have added over 1,000 housing units and we've added over 2,000 new residents to the community. That's going to continue to grow as the next, probably the next 10 years go by. There's a high demand for housing. There's a high demand for commercial space and we're just, we're just getting, they're just getting to us as that development goes north through Lion Lakes or White Bear Lake. It's coming here and we already see that with the amounts of phone calls we're getting. As far as being, hiring way too much staff, we really aren't hiring way too much staff. I tried to point out in the memo that we've hired basically two positions, a finance director and an accounting manager. Although in the proposed budget, we're also recommending the hiring of a police sergeant and a police officer. And if you recall prior discussions, calls for service are up over 30% since 2014. As you add more housing units, particularly apartment buildings, calls for service go up. You have a very robust retail section out by I-35. That has, that takes a lot of calls for the police to handle some of the calls from the Walmarts, the Menards, the Home Depots and all that. That's, that's an intense call place where we get a lot of needs for response and as more people shop, there, the more calls we have, whether it's, you know, lock myself out of the car, shoplifting or whatever, there's just a myriad of type of calls. So like I said, we really haven't added much staff. Actually, at the last update of the budget, we are recommending eliminating a staff position, the Recreation Communications Coordinator, and trying to reorganize that. But that also does depend on if we can hire a Community Development Director to take some of the pressure off of the assistant administrator. As far as why we hired the two staff members that were, everybody's been talking about, we hired a finance director. The reason we did that is because back in around 2014, 16, they, there was a decision made to outsource our finance, our finance department or our finance function, which is fine. It was a good try to do that. But what that, what that cost us was a half a million dollars in that time period and another quarter of a million dollars in overtime costs to cover. While the accounting firm did the accounting work, still somebody had to do payroll, still somebody had to do bank records, some of the Haitian, somebody had to do benefit administration and all things that they didn't do. It was cumbersome for city staff to get financial information because the, the contract only required the financial firm to be in the office one day a week. Sure, they could use email or phone calls, but that's inefficient. They have other duties when, when you contract out. The person in charge of your city also has other clients, things they have to take care of. So the response gets diluted. Hiring a finance director seemed at the time to make a lot of sense and I think it did make sense. The whole city runs complete finance and budget and making sure we spend money wisely, but also that we're correct in how we're keeping track of all that. And to outsource that weakens, I believe, weakens the financial situation of the city. We did hire a finance director and a very qualified one. And I think that we've been successful in doing some of the things we've done, bringing that back in-house and having the current finance director take a look at operations and different things that we need to improve. Those improvements came with some software upgrades, those improvements came with a decision, which I'll get to in a minute, about utility billing. And there's so many other decisions that are kind of hidden in just our day-to-day operation, things that we needed to improve and they're still trying to do that, so. I mentioned utility billing. The city did outsource utility billing to a private firm to do the billing and collection of all the utility bills. While that was a good attempt, that did not result in any reductions in staff. It just made costs go up to, to bill the utilities because they, obviously you hire a firm, they have to take, have to make a profit. So that cost at least $60,000 a year for, for that process. The other thing that was discovered when we took a good look at utility billing is the number of errors, the number of inconsistencies, let's just say, on, on how they implemented utility billing, how they maintained the utility billing, how they read meters or how they misinterpreted data, I guess, would be the kind way to say that. I think you all have had calls right before the changeover, but in the past about, my bill's messed up, my bill's messed up, my bill's messed up. We discovered a tendency sometimes to forget rate increases. So that would delay some of the financial forecasts that we had for the utility billing or for water and sewer. or for water and sewer. So, it was decided that it would be better off if we brought that back in-house. And we, we've done that successfully. Now, yes, we have some bumps and bruises there, but I think we're doing a good job there. We, we just have to have a little more time to straighten that out. But we needed to have an accounting manager to help us get through that, and to understand that process and guide that process, so that the finance director could concentrate on higher-level things, but also so that the accounting manager could understand what our staffing needs are, if there are any more, or if there are any less. And we're finding more and more that we believe that we have enough staff to do that, and maybe we have enough staff to repurpose some of those positions in other areas as they come along. That's one of the reasons we, we talked last time about a Community Development Assistant, but we held off on that, because we want to see if there's some space, as far as workload goes, that we can repurpose. We have two financial positions, actually, three financial positions, that if we do things right, we can, we can possibly fill, fill the need for and not hire additional staff. We also, with the accounting manager, hopefully, can reduce some of the overtime that's been associated with the finance department. As I said, $250,000 in overtime costs for that period of time, that's, that's quite a bit of overtime cost. It's not that it wasn't unnecessary, it was necessary for us to try to fill in and get our work done, but now with the right amount of people on board, we think we can also take care of and eliminate the overtime, at least for the most part. So, all that is a roundabout, kind of get off the subject of a Community Development Director, but it's, it's some of the things that, that we've heard about and needed to respond to. It's, again, it's not that we are trying to hire staff willy-nilly, or we just are trying to pad the budget or pad, but it's places that we need. And we are very cognizant of targeting the needs that we have and hiring the staff when we need to. So, back to the community development, we believe that it's necessary. We believe it will be a good thing to, to help not only the internal workings of community development, and planning and zoning and all that goes around there, and have some, hopefully, hire a very qualified person that can help us there, but also assist the EDA with the coming of the downtown plan results, and any other type of development that we're doing. Obviously, we're, we're hoping one day that Headwaters 123 will, will develop, and that person, a Community Development Director, would be right in the middle of that kind of a development, and, and trying to understand what, what needs to be done there, and, and, and go forward with that, and whatever else comes along. So, I'll stop talking, but it's the staff's recommendation that we hire a community development, authorize the creation of the Community Developers Position, and authorize the immediate, immediate recruitment of that position, so that we can get that person on as soon as we can. And I'll hopefully take some questions, if you have them.
Thank you, Patrick. Counsel, what questions? May you have a, may you have a, Patrick?
Mayor Bean, I don't, I don't really have a question, any questions. I think, you know, we've, we've discussed this at length. You know, and, and generally, I, I'm in support of this. I, I do think it's a good strategic move, and certainly, the need is there. I think we're at a little bit of a precipice in terms of growth and development, and, and I do believe this is a good addition to staff. I do have to say, Mr. Casey, I have, I did appreciate the level of detail in your presentation tonight, and I think we need more of that. You know, it's difficult sometimes to make good decisions when I feel like we're being a little more reactive than we should be. You know, when I can't look ahead six, 12, 18 months and say, what's coming down the pike? You know, here is, here is what we need in the here and now. And it's difficult, you know, as a council member, to make good decisions under those circumstances. You know, we, we kind of lack that long-term, and I know we're trying to get there, but we still lack that, that, that strategic roadmap, you know, that we need, comprehensively looking at everything, roads, staffing needs, you know, everything. One concern that I do have, and you brought it up tonight, is the Parks, Trails, and Lakes Commission, and, and I don't know that it influences my vote on this at all, it doesn't. But since it came up during your presentation, I, I just, and it came up during our budget discussion last week, the Parks, Trails, and Lakes Commission made a recommendation for an assistant a number of months ago, and council approved that position, and I know it was a combined communications assistant position, but it seems to have been eliminated completely, and I, and I'm not sure that is a good idea. I know that the goal with that was to really shift some of the programming work to the new assistant, so that we could free Jamie up for some of that kind of big-picture alignment with the strategic plan, or with the, with the comp plan, and, and some of those things. So, you know, I really, I really want to kind of revisit that. I think it's extremely important, and I've mentioned it before, and again, I, I thank you for the level of detail, but we need to continue to be really transparent with our constituency. There's perception, there's reality, and, you know, people stand in different places from time to time. And, and so I just, I, I appreciate your presentation, and I, I need good information to make decisions, and sometimes I don't feel like I'm consistently receiving it. But with all of that said, I fully support this position, and will be voting yes tonight.
Just to comment on the Parks position, or the recreation position, we did, at the last update, include a additional part-time wages for recreational programming, an amount of $16,100. Now, I understand that that may be not enough, or there may be another model that the council may want. If you want me to look at that, please let me know, and we will, hopefully sooner than later. If all the council wants to have me look at that, we will, and see what kind that's going to be. I would first recommend a, at least a halftime position to start, if that's what you want to do. But I'd like to hold counsel to let me know if that's something you want to look at.
Going down that, kind of all, all impacts, kind of budget allocation, Community Development Position, specifically to that question, I guess, I could use some of the, of those dollars that were allocated for 2022, what's the planned use of those dollars, and how, what might be the remaining gap? I guess I don't have a good perspective of, do we feel like the gap is filled, and we're covered with those dollars, or is there additional need that we need to consider, a change in, is there going to be parts, some part-time dollars versus a full-time position, or?
Yeah, we can, we-
And we don't need to cover that tonight, but I think it would be good to hear kind of some planned use of those dollars.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can come back with, with a better explanation. So, that the, the working model is that we would hire a seasonal person for when Jamie is the most busy, which is basically April through the end of the summer, or April, September, I haven't figured out. Actually, I don't have the exact dates, but that would be able to go out to the farmer's markets, or those activities that she wouldn't have to do, so take some of that pressure off. But we, we'll look at it again, and see if that's, I, I don't believe the, I would argue that the difference between a halftime, part-time person and a, the seasonal is probably not that much to, to worry about, or to, or break the budget. So, but we'll take a look at that. The, the difficult part there is finding part-time person versus a seasonal. So, sometimes it's easier to find seasonals, because they're college-age students or interns or something. But we'll, we'll, we'll come back with that.
I do have a number of questions. I just broadly support the, you know, Community Development Director position, and just at a top line, would reiterate some of my previous comments related to the overall need within Forest Lake to balance residential and commercial growth, and if we are going to continue to have a healthy balance and a healthy mix, we need that, that commercial side of that development to be somebody's full-time job. It's my personal perspective, because again, the residential growth is coming, residential growth is great, but if we aren't actively doing something to have a healthy mix, I think we will end up with a much higher residential mix than what we might otherwise want. I would also, I'm not going to make, make us pull up the 2040 comp plan, but just draw everyone's attention again to that southwest corridor, which is very commercial-focused today. And again, if that is actually how we want to develop, that needs to be a role. So, for those reasons, I support the position tonight. I do have some questions related to the job description. It's broad. I-
Yes, it is.
-worry, and I appreciate that it is a product-based position, so in some regards, and it's also a high-level position, so in some regards, it should be broad and very detailed. So, I like the level of detail that's in here. I think at the top line, prioritization and communication is going to be incredibly important. We're not going to accomplish all of these things at once, and so I would look for, you know, a, a healthy onboarding 90-day plan, and then look for some additional kind of work plan items and prioritization to just make sure that council and EDA and staff are all staying on the same page around prioritization. Again, this is a project-based position, and so a large project in our community could take a lot of time, and should take a lot of time. It's part of why we want to have this position created, but also the trade-off is there are things that are in, as part of the job description, that might not be getting the immediate attention, and just want us to all be eyes wide open to that. More specifically, for some clarification, the job description says acts as zoning administrator. Is that the long-term plan for this role? Is that they are the zoning administrator, or is that an interim until we have a planner? How do you expect those paths?
It will be in both job descriptions. I think that depending on what the zoning issue is, they may both be involved. So, we want to make sure that Community Development Director has, in his, in his or her job description, that they are the zoning administrator. But that will be a primary responsibility of a planner.
And then are you expecting the planner to report to the Community Development?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Could we specifically, and maybe it's in here, and I'm, I'm just not seeing it, but I think that clear delineation is, is helpful. We, I think we broadly say direct staff. Maybe we just need to define what the intended, who the intended staff is meant to be. I think that would be helpful. Also, we say directs and administers the building and planning programs. Agree in concept, in function, are we expecting building, the building department to report to community development, or is that still undetermined?
In the past position, when it existed here before, it did. Right now, no, it will not.
Okay.
I think the, and I know Al's probably not happy with, but-
Not getting rid of that.
Actually, he, it's, it's supervision right now is, is done extremely well. I believe that it doesn't need to be disturbed right now. As both of the fire, as a fire department evolves, and also community development, that may change. So, I think that we can take it out, but it may come back sooner or later to, traditionally, community development departments do have the building side in there. But I think right now, I'm not, this position's going to have their hands full. They're going to be busy. I, I promise you, they're going to be busy. So, I, I think that I don't want to upset that kind of supervision, because I believe the building department's working fairly well with the, the way it's supervised, and some of the employees that we have now on board.
But, but they still need information from someone like the-
Yes.
-Community Development Director to move it. It trickles on down, and that's, that's the really important thing about this, and that's why I'm certainly going to support this, because we had that before, you know, back in, what, 2015, it was the last time, maybe, something like that?
Yeah, I believe that was correct.
And anything we can do to help expedite information on down the line, so the building department can get their job done, just makes it better for everybody.
Yeah. And, and one of the things that I think you pointed out in one of the past meetings, is that we need to refocus our efforts on how we administrate the planning and Community Development Department, and with, and with building. We need to improve our processes, we need to better coordinate our processes, we need to communicate better with each other, and we need to communicate better with not only the general public, but the contractors and, and the developers. I think that, and as you said, I said he's going to have his hands, he or she will have his hands full, but one of the number-one goals is to recreate our process, streamline those processes, and, and make sure that we, we all know what we're doing, and, and I think that we all have an agreement at the staff level, what we're doing. If we have disagreements, we'll figure that out, but we need to give clear direction that sometimes we get lost on doing that. But I, I know we need to get that fixed up a little bit.
At risk of wordsmithing, perhaps, this is better stated in this bullet of coordinates with the building department. Just, I want, I want them to be clear line of responsibility. At the end of the day, when something goes wrong, who's, who's responsible? Or when something goes right, who's responsible?
Yeah.
And I think that coordination is important. We can always make those adjustments if there is, if we get to a level of maturity and we're ready to make that transition. I suspect Chief Newman might be, might be advocating for that at some point. But I, I do want whoever is looking at this job description to come into that position, kind of understanding what the scope of direct control is. Other points of feedback related to the position, for clarity. So, tonight, we are authorizing the, authorizing the creation of the position, and is the ask that we authorize the recruitment?
Recruitment.
Is that correct? Process would be interview, and then bring back for approval?
Yes, it was. As always, we would come back to the council with a hiring recommendation, and ask, seek your approval of a candidate, that we hopefully will be successful.
Any other questions? We're ready for, ready for council action, if council's ready?
Mayor Bean, I move approval of the addition of the Community Development Director Position, and allowing recruitment to begin immediately for that position.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion is approved.
Thank you.
That ends our, the action portion of tonight's agenda. We do have a couple of budget, or I was, they're budget-related, but we do have a couple of discussion items. Just for note, these are, this is intended to be a working session of council. Anything that is discussed tonight that requires official action would come back and be part of a future agenda for official action. So, no action taken on these items tonight. And our first is our quarterly financial report from Sandy.
Okay, is it showing on the screen, or is it just being announced?
Not quite yet.
Here we are.
Okay, here we are. Okay, the council has before them the second quarter report, which is through June 30th of 2021. And I'm just going to go through it briefly, page by page. And the first one that I'll go through is the general fund. And looking at this, what this does, for those that don't know, is we compare the 2021 through June compared to the prior year of June 30th of 2020. And this gives a trend type of data, you know, knowing that, you know, some things will change slightly in, in a city funding source and, and expenditures. But normally, there's going to be a trend available to make sure that our, our budget is spent according to that trend. And looking at the taxes, we did make a change in some accounting practice, and, and this actually makes it a better situation for us to know where we're really at, at that point in time. We're able to recognize advances early that come in in June, and we can record them in June. So, we're going to do that ongoing on, on a yearly base, annual basis, so that, that more, is more projected of where we should be at that point in time. And looking at the miscellaneous revenue, as we have had conversations before about the interest revenue, that's where that's showing, and that's, you know, why that is showing as a low amount of revenue source coming in for that line item. And, and as, as we try to discuss this, and try to explain this piece of it, just so you understand, it really is the market value of those long-term investments that are going down. And because of, for accounting purposes, we have to actually book them at the end of the year. Historically, they've shown it on this quarterly report, so that we see what that's going to be on a quarterly basis. And, you know, last year, we reaped a lot of the benefits from that market value. Now, this year, we're, you know, because it has to do a lot with municipal and US bonds, it's, the market for bonds, of course, has decreased this year, so that's why you're seeing that decrease on the quarterly reports at this point in time.
Before you move, before you move on to expenses, just overall, overall revenue, it looks like the tax, you've mentioned a change in process, and how those, those taxes are being recorded. We're slightly under the 50% mark. Is that because of a difference in estimation, or are we expecting those actual revenues? I'm not so much concerned about as of September, but now that here we are in October, are we-
I think so.
Are we running behind?
I think so. I mean, there's usually that cleanup and jam- I think so. I mean, there's usually that cleanup in January, too, for the year after or prior. So I anticipate that that's going to get more in line with where our budget is and where we're going to be.
I understand it's only, you know, 1.2% off of 50, but it's a small percentage of a large number. So, okay.
But we anticipate that's going to be pretty close to what the budget is.
Okay.
Where we're at. And looking at the expenditures, going down, I'm not seeing anything alarming whatsoever. I mean, last year, we had the COVID expenditures in the emergency funds. So we were seeing that increase last year. But when I go down, I'm not seeing anything that's alarming. And actually, we're spending actually a little bit less than last year, which probably has to do with those COVID funds. So I don't see anything, any trend that is alarming that's showing me that we're spending beyond our budgets. Looking at the surface water management, again, we did another change in accounting practice in our utility billing revenue. We're booking it to the quarter in which it actually belongs. In the past, what has happened is it was a two-month delay. And when we were booking that revenue, and now we're actually putting it back to June 30th than when it actually belongs to June 30th. So with our new system, we're able to do that more readily. So you'll see that with the graph on the bottom as well. It's going to be a little wacky this year, I'm going to say, because we're not going to be showing those revenues exactly from year to year. But just so we know that, that's because of a change in accounting practice. But looking at overall, again, I'm not seeing anything alarming. You know, we may have had some, you know, wages and benefits that that this year that weren't hired last year type of thing. But other than that, I'm not seeing anything alarming here. And we had a capital expenditure which we budgeted for. So looking at overall, we're in line with what we should be at this point in time. And the airport fund, again, I don't see anything alarming there either. It's, we show actually a little bit more revenue coming in. And when you look at the graph below, there's just a little bit more revenue coming in at this point in time during the year. And that's been kind of varied throughout the year, depending on when that revenue comes in. And the same thing with surface water happens with water fund, the difference in the revenue sources coming in. We're recognizing them earlier. And, but other, when you look at the expenditures, there's nothing alarming there. It's right in line with where we should be. And same thing with sewer fund. I'm not seeing anything alarming there as well. It's right where we should be and actually maybe a little bit better. And looking at the cash and the investments, you know, there's been a conscious effort since we changed investment companies and to do things a little bit differently and not so much put everything in CDs like we had in the past and diversify so that we can have a more diversified portfolio, which is helpful when we do investments. Unfortunately, market value comes to play with where those investments are. But, you know, we tried, and what's been trying to do over this last few years is do that more long-term. So when that market value does crash during one year, hopefully that next year, it's going to level itself out. So there's a lot of diversification that we've done as well as bringing it more long-term instead of the short-term and diversifying that as well. So if you have any questions other than that, and I did break out the bond fund separately again just to, because we don't want that to kind of skew things a little bit differently. And having that separate helps to see that. So with that, that's all I have unless there's any questions.
Any questions for Sandy? Hearing done. Thank you for that. Very helpful. We also have budget as a discussion item, broad budget category. Patrick, any further budget conversation you'd like to have?
No, I, not too much. If there is any questions on the budget, we'd like the council to forward them to me. If you haven't maybe thought of them after some of our sessions, but if there's more, just let us know. I thought that just, I would go over what we, just recap what we went over last meeting with the changes in the budget. It'll be very quick. We have been looking at the budget and continue to look at the proposed budget until December. But what we have found is we added $72,000 in additional revenue based on some updates that we have from the state. And we had some expenditures that were reduced in the amount of $74,913. That had to do with some reducing part-time wages in administration. We added some wages for the Community Development Director. We decreased professional services in the building department since we're fully staffed. We don't need to use Minspec as much next year. Again, I mentioned, we eliminated the Communication and Recreation position, which may come back in a part-time, depending on what we find. And we added $16,100 for seasonal part-time wages for that as well. With all said and done, it basically allowed us to change what we are recommending on the levy. And right now, we're recommending a total, the original levy was $12,530, $12,530,771. We're now, we'll be recommending $12,000, $12,383,858. So for all those who focus on that percentage change number, which a lot of you do, we are going from a nine-point, proposed 9.46 increase to an 8.18% increase. And again, that may change depending on if we find any other changes that we need to make or we have any revised revenues. But I know that's where we're at. So if there are questions, please forward them or stop by and we can discuss those. But we will be looking at the Recreation position. But I don't know if we have anything else we need to look at coming up yet. I think we're pretty, covered pretty much everything so far.
Council, anything in particular you would like to put on radar for future discussion?
Patrick, I think you've outlined additional areas. I would just note, this is a little bit ahead of staff or council updates, but the EDA had requested an updated budget discussion at a November meeting just with consideration of the Community Development position. They just want to do an overall review, which I think is also a healthy discussion just to realign with how well that EDA, just kind of reviewing what's in that EDA budget and kind of current impacts to 2022 calls.
I think it would be a good idea to revisit tax impact as well. With, I think it would be a good idea to revisit tax impact as well.
Oh, yeah, we will. And we definitely will bring that forward.
Okay.
I mean, in November or end of December, whatever workshop, we just have to recap. We will bring that back to you.
Okay. All right. That concludes tonight's working session. Let's move into staff updates. We'll just go around the line. And we'll start with Karen.
Thank you, Mayor Bayne. I don't have any updates this evening.
Anything for Karen tonight? Dan?
Just one update tonight. I will be attending the Men Car Expo this Wednesday with Creston, Washington County to promote the city of Forest Lake. So I'll be out there with commercial real estate agents and developers within the metropolitan community. And we'll be there from three to seven promoting the city of Forest Lake. So attending that on Wednesday.
Thank you, Dan. Anything for Dan tonight? Patrick?
I have no report, but if you have questions, please let me know.
Anything else for Patrick? Dave?
No updates this evening.
Brian?
Mayor, City Council, nothing additional unless you have any specific questions.
I want to do just a quick recap on the high-level summary of the maintenance that was done on 61. Thank you.
So last week, it got pretty interesting at the end of the week. Obviously, MINDOT Maintenance came in and did some work. We've been advocating for multiple years now for them to incorporate that portion of Highway 61 in their capital improvement plan. Nothing's been identified. We kept this respectfully disagreeing with what they were looking at and analyzing and replying for. Eventually, they came to an internal agreement that some work needed to be done on it. Obviously, nothing's planned for like reconstruction at this point. So they were going to come in and do some minor patching, like a moving operation, and then start setting stuff up in their CIP, right? And then the day of, when Maintenance had available bodies, they came to Forest Lake to start some of that work. Work became a lot more than they originally thought that needed to be done. So the operations of the maintenance work changed, and it wasn't coordinated with anybody or their engineering staff. But times that does happen between departments and somebody, an organization that's that big, kind of one of those things you think, too, that they just didn't, will ask for forgiveness later. Obviously, the work was a lot better than was originally communicated to us what was going to happen. So we got a better band-aid than what was going to be done out there. But, you know, obviously, it was two days of very frustrating business owners and probably residents. Due to state highway traffic was pushed onto your local roadways. Thing is, it was done in two days. Hopefully, it brings more awareness to the Highway 61 corridor that's in much-needed safety improvements and traffic improvements. So we'll continue to work with MINDOTS and hopefully, stuff continues to move forward with being advanced in their capital improvement plan. And there's other things going on with Highway 61. When I get more detailed updates, I'll provide the council with as well.
Thank you, Brian. I know you fielded a lot of questions that day. And so thank you for kind of being the the communication channel between MINDOT and some of those concerned businesses. So much appreciated.
Anything else for Ryan this evening? All right, Chief Peterson?
Yeah, Mayor and City Council members, I have a couple of updates for you this evening. First off, from January to September of this year, our officers have responded to approximately 13,000 calls for service. We're on track to respond to approximately 17,000 calls this year. And I'm always asked, what type of calls do we respond to? What are the most serious ones or the ones that we mostly respond to? And every day, it changes. You know, one day, it might be domestics. One day, it might be crash, vehicle crashes. But we do have the medicals, vehicle crashes, disputes, mental health calls like M Health, mentioned in their presentation a few months ago, have really, really risen. And then, of course, the theft and shoplifting and juvenile complaints. And then you just trickle in all the other ones that kind of fall in there. Dog barking complaints or animal complaints and those types of things. Secondly, we have just finished interviews this evening for the vacant position of police officer. We have chosen four candidates who are going to be moving on through the process. And the next process is going to be a background investigation. Those that successfully complete the background investigation will be forwarded on for a physical examination and a psychological examination. The background investigation will take anywhere from two to three weeks. And then it might take another couple of weeks for the medical, physical examination and psychological examination. And that's all I have for you this evening unless you have questions for me.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief? All right. Chief Newman?
Mayor, members of the council, I am also providing an update on staffing. Thirty-two members is when we're at current staffing or at full staffing. And currently, we're at 27 members. We just went through a hiring process and we're going to background or we're in the process of backgrounding five. If they all pass background, then we'll be back up to 32 members. We are approved in the Fire Department for 40 members, but we feel that we can adequately provide response at 32 members. And that's where we've been for the last probably 15, 16 years. That's all.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief? Sandy?
The only update I have is, I know we had conversations a while back about the fees being charged for the credit cards and the online. It finally got fixed today. It took that long, unfortunately, with the credit card system and the process they had to go through to change it. So as of today, charges still went to the customer, but we're going to be working on reversing all these charges now at this point forward. So I just wanted to provide that update in case there's any questions of anybody getting charged again. It took this long to actually get it fixed.
Understood. But the goal is no credit card processing fees?
Right. As of today, we, the city will be charged all those charges. But now we have to go back and reverse all the charges that have been charged to the customer.
Thank you for that follow-up. And Kim?
Mayor, members of council, so moving forward on the utility billing, it's been going really well. Certification letters were sent out, and we do have a public hearing scheduled for November. And we're finishing up our process right now to get our file out to the vendor to get our third-quarter utility billing printed. So we're looking forward to that. And as far as I can see and stuff, things are going very well. I'm very excited that it's been in-house. I think we've went through a lot of challenges, but I definitely see a better road. And if anybody has any questions?
And for Kim?
No, just yay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This will be, so this next quarter, will that be the first quarter that is produced entirely through the Forest Lake system? Because last quarter was cut off. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. You'll probably need to remind us of that one more time. So, good. All right, so let's bring back for council updates. We'll start with Councilmember Munson.
That was a very long, that was a long meeting and proof to planning commissions, a hard-working group. So many thanks to them.
Very good. Any questions for Councilmember Munson? Councilmember Beistrom?
I attended the Parks, Trails, and Lakes Commission meeting. The commission reviewed the Birchwood Estates concept plan and the Eagle and addressed an issue with Eagle Bluff and a parking sign issue that they were having there. We, it's, this parking is adjacent to Eagle Bluff Park. And people assume it's city parking when it really belongs to the residential area there. So they just approved some signage for that space. And then just a couple of discussion items. They reviewed the new updated Belts Park master plan. They kind of scaled that down a little bit. It's, they're really headed in a nice direction, I think, kind of keeping those core pieces that really emerged as part of that planning process and securing feedback from the community and the youth a couple of years ago. They had some discussion around the North Shore Circle Park concept plan and voted to, at least at this point in time, not approve the pathway down to the lake and this kind of that seating area there, just with some concerns about ATV and snowmobile traffic. And that led to a broader discussion about access points around the lake. And I know that's been a conversation we've been having for years and maybe doing some sort of analysis of that. Just touched on the new park fee schedule. That'll be coming back. And then the tree lighting ceremony. Was the other piece that was discussed.
In-person tree lighting, is that the plan?
Yes.
Very good.
And they'll be bringing some back in-house here earlier in the day and then heading that direction for a tree lighting. COVID permitting.
Understood. Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Hesnik?
I have no updates tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Valento?
Just that last week, the Cable Commission approved the amended bylaws.
Very good. Excellent.
Just a quick update. I'd mentioned previously that the EDA had some questions and wanted to come back into a budget session in November, just to review where we are from an EDA budget. We also, part of what prompted that question was we received feedback and a report from NAN at the Forest Lake Area Chamber of Commerce on the BRNE agreement that we have with them. And she just gave a great year-to-date kind of summary of activities, which is part of that plan. And now we will be considering a renewal of that contract for the 2022 period. And we received some feedback of items that should be on that and how we might want to consider structuring that agreement for some long-term success. That is an agreement that we had historically had with the chamber, went dormant and was not used for about a five- to six-year period. And we recently brought that back and just trying to provide some long-term stability to that relationship on both sides and some clarity around work plan and division of duty. So it was a good discussion. We also heard a presentation related to a potential project at the Headwaters 123 of an additional data center study that we could, it's a project that we could consider funding. of an additional data center study that we could, it's a project that we could consider funding. It is tabled for 20, until 2022. We just heard a preliminary presentation of what we might want to do next to further promote development, essentially in a cap, in a nutshell. We do some very high-level study that helps to shorten the due diligence period for any future data center project. It becomes another artifact that we can have on the shelf and makes potentially our site more attractive. So great discussion and something that we would bring back in 2022 if we decide to move forward with that.
With that being the plan, the end of our planned open agenda, I believe we will be moving into a closed session. Does someone want to motion us into a closed session?
Mayor Bane, I move to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3B for discussion regarding parcel numbers 290322130002 and 2903221240001. The closed session will be held in the Forest Lake Conference Room and will commence immediately. Once the closed session is completed, the city council will reconvene the open meeting portion of tonight's city council meeting in council chambers. As there are no other agenda items, once back in session, the council will adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion and a second? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and we're in closed session.